Okay.
Okay, everybody ready? Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the May 4th, 2021 virtual meeting of the North Bend City Council to order. While the clerk, please confirm the role.
All council members are present, Your Honor.
Yeah. Okay. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have nine items. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
No move.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Gothel and this second by Councilmember Ladenbach. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any against? The motion carries seven oh and is unanimous. Citizens comments, now is the time for members of the public to come forward to speak on items that are not on the agenda tonight. If you'd like to speak, please indicate using the chat feature or star nine on your phone and Ms. Maskell will call on you when it's time to speak. You will need to please remember to state your name and address for the record and you will be allowed three minutes to speak. Would anybody like to comment?
Mike Thomas, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Good evening, council members. This is Michael Thomas at 1231 La Forest Drive SE. Can everyone hear me? Could I get a nod?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick, quick question and it's prompted from the recent news on regarding the Snoqualmie Chamber of Commerce and some of the statements made by the city of Snoqualmie. I'd like to hear more in general from city council or at its future city council meeting about our financial state, about our, you know, sales tax revenue, our property tax revenue. The discussion around the city of Snoqualmie has kind of led to the same question on the city of North Bend. And unfortunately, there just hasn't been a lot of external media coverage on our financial state. And I would have a request that it would perhaps be appropriate to discuss that at a future council meeting. That's my only comment for this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I am not seeing anybody else.
Okay, so seeing none, I will go to announcements, presentations and appointments. Shockingly enough, somehow the mayor leaves and I end up getting two proclamations. They tried to sneak in a third. So luckily these ones, I, well, I usually support all of our proclamation, but bear with me as I read through these. The first one is Emergency Services Week. So whereas the emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas its members of Eastside Fire and Rescue stand ready to provide lifesaving care for those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those experiencing sudden illnesses or injuries. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out of hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas the members of Eastside Fire and Rescue, whether career or reserves engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, we, the mayors of Isiqua, North Bend and Samamish, do here by proclaim the week of May 16th, 22nd, 2021 to be Emergency Services Week and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities. Chief Clark, I believe you're online. Would you like to speak to this?
I am and thank you, Councilmember Garcia. I appreciate the proclamation. And it is well deserved, especially in this year with COVID. Your first responders did an outstanding job with our police partners and ambulance partners out there. It's been a tough year. Our people and your E4 employees certainly appreciate your recognition and I'll be sure this gets passed along and we will take care of our folks the week of May 16th to make sure they're recognized and thank you so much for this.
Absolutely. Would anybody else like to speak on this? Okay, I will. I don't think our emergency responders, particularly Eastside Fire and Rescue and Snoqualmie Police Department, get the recognition that they deserve on a daily basis. I feel like we are so blessed to be in a partnership with both these agencies. I have had the pleasure to unfortunately use the services of Eastside Fire and Rescue. The only bad experience is when Chief Clark reprimanded me for not knowing how to dial 911 because I drove myself over. But on a daily basis, the, the, he said Fire and Rescue and Snoqualmie Police Department offer our citizens excellent care and service and I just, from the bottom of our hearts, we just really want to say thank you and and that this week is the least that we could do in recognizing what you guys do for our valley. So thank you very much. Ms. Ladenbach?
Thanks, Mr. Garcia. I'd like to echo your comments and also say that one of the reasons that we don't hear a lot about our first responders or emergency service providers is because they are professional and because they do do the job on a daily basis. And it's no drama. It's performance and excellence on a daily basis. And we come to expect it and they deliver. And I think that's the, the thing that we all need to remember that the reason that we don't have controversy like there are in some communities is because our providers are doing the best job available. That's what I had to say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Mary?
I couldn't agree more. Thank you, Ross, for those amazing words. That's how, exactly how I feel. We are very, very lucky to have these agencies here to help everybody and we're, we're very blessed. Thank you.
Councilmember Colan?
Not only are they professional and able to save lives and do all the important jobs that they do, but they're highly involved in our community, welcoming to our children at the firehouses. And getting involved in the community early is huge to make trust and make everybody feel comfortable with you. So we appreciate you.
Okay, only saying Councilmember Gothel left. I think we can move on. Oh, no, go ahead.
Just wanted to say I've had the pleasure to work with Eastside Fire and Rescue for a good portion of my time on council. And I gotta tell you, we are blessed to have that agency and the people associated. I know Heather made the comment about being involved in the community. There's a lot of things that probably aren't publicized out a lot that the firefighters do. One of the things is during the winter season, they work on cutting cords of wood and trying to get wood out to those people that need it. They go out to some of our residents' homes and help them build, you know, ramps that are in wheelchairs. There's a lot of things that are unsung there that we need to realize, that we don't always get to see, but need to appreciate. And we're lucky to have that type of response. And we're lucky in, in an area the size of ours to have the type of agency that we have with all the additional services that we get. And, you know, over the next couple of weeks, I'm hoping we'll get Chief Clark back and we'll start talking about things or on top of that, the things that are matter to them, like us being involved in the Firewise program and other things that they've tried to push. And also the amount of effort that they put in for the vaccines. Not only were they instrumental in developing the Samamish, Snoqualmie Tribe, Isiqua site, they went out mobily to our seniors and delivered vaccines to our seniors who were homebound. So there's a lot of things we don't always get to see. So I appreciate that we're representing or recognizing them this week. So congratulations and thank you for what you guys do.
Yes, thank you. Okay. The next proclamation is Building Safety Month. So Office of the Mayor here does proclaim, whereas North Bend is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings and infrastructure that serve our citizens both in everyday life and in times of disaster. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, labors, plumbers and and others in the construction industry who work year round to ensure the safety or the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit organization that brings together local, state and federal officials that are experts in the built environment to create, implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work and play. And whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that develop that are developed by the National Voluntary Consensus Codes and Standards Developing Organizations, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the world. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of the, our communities largely unknown protectors of public safety. Our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, energy efficient and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. And whereas prevent, prepare, protect building codes, save, the theme for Building Safety Month 2021 encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety, training the next generation and new technologies in the construction era industry. Now therefore, I, Chris Garcia, Mayor Pro Tem, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month in the city of North Bend and encourage all citizens to consider appropriate steps that can be taken to ensure the safety of our built environment and recognize the importance of safety codes by local and state agencies that save lives and protected homes and businesses. Anybody want to comment on that? Seeing none? I'm gonna move on to my next notes here. Did you guys all know that, that Suzie, speaking of recognition, gives the mayor notes to run these meetings? It's actually, it's actually quite, it's actually quite nice. So thank you to the clerk. Introductions. We have a public hearing ordinance amending taxes, rate and fees schedule regarding the water rates. Water rates. Mr. Regos, would you provide the staff report?
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia. Good evening, City Council. This agenda item is about resetting water rates and water GFCs, our general facility charges. Page 113 in your packet. Quick introduction. I'm Mark Regos and the Deputy City Administrator and Public Works Director. I'm also joined by Don DeBerg, our city engineer, and Don Masco, our Finance Director. And Sergey from FCS Group. Quick look back, there was a work study, I think on April 6th, led by Don Masco and Sergey that talked about our water rates, the GFCs and some of the capital projects. So just a couple considerations. I have a short staff report and we can answer questions later. First of all, nobody wants their water rates, sewer rates or any other rates to increase, but over time costs of all products and services do increase. The same is true with water. Ductile iron pipe costs more to buy now than it did 10 years ago. Labor costs are higher. If the city, if the city were never to increase rates, that would result in deferred maintenance. That's not where we want to be as a city. Consideration number one is to ensure deferred maintenance does not increase. Consideration number two, the city of North Bend is one of the few water purveyors in the state of Washington that pays to provide mitigation water. In our case, mitigation water is moving water from point A to point, the Cedar River Basin to point B, Snoqualmie River Basin. There are costs in paying for this water to Seattle Public Utilities, about several hundred thousand dollars per year, having more detailed water system that requires SCADA and SCADA is our supervisory control and data acquisition. That's what it stands for. And paying to operate and maintain this system. I've calculated that if all of our water costs were in a pie, then 20% of that pie would be attributed to mitigation costs for our water fund. A third consideration is the city is in the midst of replacing many 50 to 60-year-old water mains that are past their useful lifespan. Several recently constructed water main replacement projects include 412th Avenue, 415th Way, Northeast 12th Street, North Bend Way, and we're about to start on Pickett Avenue and 6th Street next. So let's keep the momentum going. We have talked about reducing leakage and we have more remains. Water main replacements cannot be paid for through GFCs though. The city cannot allocate GFCs to replace 60-year-old water mains. However, what I can do is require developers to make improvements to city systems if there's a direct nexus, which is what happened for the Dalgran mule pasture. Salal ran out of water, so developers funding all of that water main extension, which is about a mile long. So that's not being paid for by water rate pairs. Fourth consideration is GFCs are increasing due to some of the capital projects. These include building a mitigation reservoir on the Middle Fork Snoqualmie River, completing cascade water mitigation system and a portion of the cost of the National Guard water line. The city will hopefully be obtaining some funds from the state and Puget Western for this water line and also latecomer costs that anybody connects to it later. These projects again are not being paid for by water rate pairs. A fifth consideration is the city wants to see commercial growth happen on North Bend Way. The city needs the GFCs and rates to increase so that the city can replace these water mains and increase mitigation capacity. Final note is the city's water customer base is smaller than the city sewer base, sewer customer base, because the city is the only sewer purveyor in the area, whereas with water, there are two water purveyors. It's something to consider that we cannot spread the expenses as broadly in water as we can with sewer. In conclusion, city staff recommend this water rate and GFC adjustment move forward for the next five years. That concludes my staff report. So I'll kick it back to you, Councilmember Garcia.
Okay. Do any members of the council have any clarifying questions? Okay, seeing none, I now open the public hearing and hearing on an ordinance amending the taxes, rates and fee schedules regarding water rates. If you would like to speak, please indicate. So using the chat feature or star nine on your phone and Ms. Maskell will call on you when it's your time to speak. Please remember you'll need to state your name and address for the record and you will be allowed three minutes to speak. Ms. Maskell?
Mike Thomas, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Sure, thank you very much. Michael Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive SE. I continue to follow water as a result of my long commitment to, you know, keeping the public informed both on city water and as well as Salal. One of the things that immediately strikes me is the annual 5.5% rate increase. Whereas not only, you know, three months ago, you have an approved water system plan that was an alternating 3 and 6% rate increase. Frankly, I feel this speaks to the credibility and integrity of the water system plan. We're not even a short time out of planning and the rate increases are even higher. So I'm concerned about that for my fellow citizens that happen to be on the city water system. Second thing, I also had the benefit of attending the city council work study on April 6th and a transcription of that. I'm concerned about a couple things. One, the payments, I believe on the bond are interest only as proposed for the next five years. So it seems to me you're setting yourself up for even higher future water rate increases. Again, I just noted that in the discussion. Second thing is I also note that there are some expenditures related to providing water for the armory and associated development that have a city cost component. This does seem contrary to what's promised. I mean, this is clearly all new development. I believe Mr. Regos had the correct answer of, but it wasn't clear that we, that folks were going to require a latecomer agreement to pay for those. So I really wanted to see that spelled out. Also, why is the city, you know, financing some of the capital expenditures for this, you know, should not the developer pay for this and the developer, you know, gather this through, through a latecomer agreement as well? So I have some concern about that. My third concern was also some statements around the rate increases not covering existing debt service and the city was using capital reserves even under the rate increases. So I'd like to see that clarified. And if so, at what point, at what rate is the city using its capital reserves and at what points that exhaust and more increases are necessary? And last, and lastly, I also see that many of the capital expenses seem to be deferred to 2026 and beyond, which was out of the five-year rate increase window. I think it's very important to take the capital improvements and charges as soon as possible, such that you can pass them on as fractional GFC charges. This is the summary of, of most, of the majority of my comments. I understand this is likely to be a first reading and a second reading will be required. If someone could clarify that, I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time. This concludes my comment.
Anybody else?
I do not see anyone else who wishes to speak.
Okay, I now close the public.
Hold on, we got this one right at the buzzer here. Wendy Miller, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Oh, good evening. I actually didn't plan on speaking tonight, but wanted to make sure that I was just here for the reading and thank you for letting me speak. I'm property owner at 1422 Bendigo Boulevard North in North Bend. I live at 6814 Denny Peak Drive Southeast Snoqualmie. You know, I, I hear a lot of people out there that are always very upset about increases. I'm one of those people. I don't like rate increases. They're very tough to swallow, but they're also very necessary as Mark very clearly laid out. You know what? There are certain things that as time goes on, there's maintenance, there's, you know, rates increase, labor increases, all of these things increases. And we don't like it, but it is the fact of life and it is what we all have to deal with. And the moderate increases that the city has proposed, has proposed, I believe are actually moderate. You know, as much as we don't like increases, we will have to incur them as time goes on. So I encourage the city, as you continue to look at these options, you know, we are going to have to deal with this. You will have to deal with this at some point in time. And we might as well deal with them now so they don't become more expensive as maintenance, you know, doesn't get done or labor continues to increase. Let's do this now. Let's do the right thing now as we, as we move forward. So and, and just so everybody does know, because I am one of those developers, we are paying very dearly for, for connection, for installation of, of equipment, et cetera, as we develop our properties so that frankly, we can be part of the community as well, which we are all very excited to do, but it is very expensive and we are paying for all of our development. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, now that is it, Chris.
Okay, I now close the public hearing at 7:24 PM. Councilmember Gothel, will you please make the motion?
Whoops, got unmuted first. Absolutely. So motion to move the ordinance and setting the new water rates and general facility charges and amending the tax rates and fee schedule for a second reading and adoption at the May 18th, 2021 council meeting.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Gothel, would you like to speak to the motion?
I'm not going to speak much to it tonight because it'll be coming back, but I think it's, I think the city's done a great job. I think they've covered everything. And I appreciate the hard work of the finance department in putting this together and the consultant that we have. Thank you.
Mr. Ladenbach?
I agree with Mr. Gothel that the team has done a great job here. The rate, while we all agree, nobody likes to pay increased rates considering what we're doing with that money. I thought the, the rate was, you know, as good as we could expect in these circumstances. And look forward to a due pass on the 18th.
Would any other council members like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none. The motion to move ordinance, setting new water rates and the general facilities charges and amending the taxes, rates and fee schedule for a second reading and adoption at the May 18th, 2021 councilman meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries unanimous. Now we're on to AB 21-050, an ordinance for issuance of water and sewer revenue and refunding bonds. Ms. Maskell, would you please provide the staff report?
Certainly. So as we're winding down Phase One Priority Improvement Projects at the wastewater treatment plant, we're now turning towards looking at the financing of Phase Two improvements. And so the bond ordinance before you this evening authorizes the city to move forward with issuing revenue bonds to provide funding for the construction of these Phase Two improvements. In addition, over the past year, the city has continued to monitor whether any savings can be achieved by refunding or refinancing any of our other current outstanding debt obligations. And this bond ordinance also authorizes the city to refund and refinance the remaining balance of $6.2 million of the 2015 water sewer refunding bonds. As several of you may recall, the city also defeased or redeemed early some outstanding obligations in conjunction with the 2019 revenue bonds that we issued for Phase One of the project. And by prepaying the outstanding 2010 and 2012 bonds at that time, the city was able to realize over $600,000 worth of interest savings over the life of the bonds. So the result of essentially refinancing the 2015 bonds probably won't produce as dramatic of a savings, but it will result in lower interest rates and therefore a savings to the city moving forward. So the bond ordinance this evening authorizes the issuance and sale of water sewer revenue bonds in a maximum amount not to exceed $30.4 million. $24.2 million will go towards wastewater treatment plant Phase Two improvements and the remainder will refund the 2015 bonds. The city is extremely fortunate to have a very talented and dedicated financing team working with your staff on bond-related items. And while you may only get the chance to see and hear from them while we're issuing debt, they actually work with the city year round to identify potential cost savings, such as the refunding of the bonds we're discussing tonight, as well as to ensure that the city is compliant with all reporting and debt covenant requirements. So I'd like to introduce, actually I think only two of our three financing team are with me this evening. But Deanna Gregory is the city's bond counsel, who most of you have had the opportunity to meet over the years. Deanna is a partner with Pacifica Law Group and has been the city's bond counsel for many years. Also with us this evening is Caitlin Caldwell. She is the Vice President of KeyBank Capital Markets and is leading the underwriting team for our bond sale. Many of you have also met Caitlin as she worked on the 2019 and also the 2018 bond issues. And working closely with her, and I don't believe he's with us this evening, is Odin Atkinson, who is an investment banking associate with KeyBank Capital Markets. And I can't say enough nice things about the help and support that we receive from these three individuals as we go through these very time-consuming and detail-oriented bond issuances. So at this point, I will now turn it over to Deanna and Caitlin for a few brief comments and then we will open it up for questions from the council.
Great, Don, thank you. This is Deanna Gregory. I'm not quite sure why I can't get my video to work. It is saying that.
See if I can help with that. Well, go ahead. I'll keep working on it on my end.
Okay, perfect.
He's probably blocking you. He likes to do that.
Oh, okay, I will just, I'll be this, and I wish I had one of your great backgrounds with me. So I'm loving seeing everybody's May, May the 4th backgrounds. Thank you, Don, for your very nice words. It's been a pleasure working with the city and. Thank you, Don, for your very nice words. It's been a pleasure working with the city and we greatly appreciate the opportunity to be representing the city on this bond issue and, and, and tonight to be in front of you to present the bond ordinance. What you have in front of you is a copy of the bond ordinance authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the improvements, as Don mentioned, as well as the refunding opportunities if it results in savings for the city. So we have built in a lot of flexibility into this ordinance to keep an eye on the market and to be able to monitor how the market is moving along with, with those savings results and to be able to move forward and be pretty nimble in that regard. And that's a similar technique that you all have used in the past to save some, to save some money there. And okay, it says the host has asked me to start my video. There we go. Oh, I'm still trying while I'm talking here. The, the ordinance itself is authorizes a not to exceed principal amount and I know that Caitlin's going to speak to some of the numbers that are included in the ordinance as well as as part of the overall financing. But the, this ordinance is similar to past bond ordinances that the council has considered. It is a, the only time that, based on the language in this ordinance, that this team will come to the council for approval. So this is the only action that will need to be taken to authorize the issuance of these bonds unless for some reason, the, the terms and conditions that are outlined in this ordinance cannot be satisfied. So this ordinance authorizes the bonds to be issued subject to that not to exceed principal amount, subject to a not to exceed true interest cost. So that's your all in interest cost and a not to exceed final maturity date and a savings, minimum savings target. So so long as the bond sale fits within those parameters, the, we won't be back in front of the council for additional approval. But if for some reason the market goes sideways and that, and these parameters cannot be satisfied, we will come back to the council for further discussion and for further approval. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. There's a lot of, you know, some of the administrative items that go into these bonds, they are securities, they are, we're expecting them to be tax exempt for federal income tax purposes. A lot of those covenants are built into this document. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the ordinance before I turn it over to Caitlin to talk about the, the numbers and some of the, the more exciting part of the bond issue than the legal documents.
Ross?
Well, Deanna, thank you very much. And Caitlin, I look forward to your, your input on these important issues. We've noticed a recent uptick in the basis points for long-term debt, you know, showing up in the 10-year bond yields and stuff like that. How confident are you that we're going to be able to meet the parameters that are outlined in the documents in, with that rising going on right now? Are we going to be able to act quickly enough to capture where we need to be?
That's a great question. I can jump in here again. Caitlin Caldwell with KeyBank Capital Markets and I'm representing the, the bond underwriting team this evening. And so, you know, really good question you asked about market rates and how much flexibility we have. Just to put things in perspective, I know that we've all heard about a rising interest rate environment. The, the municipal market data is data curve, what we call MMD. I think I've presented to the city before and shown some charts, but that is the tax exempt benchmark rate that we use in the municipal market space. So the tax exempt base, right? I know we hear a lot about the treasury 10-year spot rate. That's the, the kind of the key market rate that the, you know, most of the media use. But again, we're following the tax exempt market. The 10-year benchmark rate for MMD right now is just that 1%, right? So that's the kind of our benchmark rate. To put that in perspective, the average over the last 25 years was 3.3%. So just to kind of, you know, paint the broad picture, rates right now are extremely low. Yes, we have had some creep up in the first quarter of this year as our, you know, economy has continued to recover. And I think we do expect that there could be a bit more creep up in that rate. But again, you know, rates are, are at historical lows and we have a lot of flexibility under those not to exceed parameters that Deanna had mentioned. Right now, the all-in tick, all-in TIC, which is our effective cost of capital is, is right around 2.7%. So even if rates do bump up a little bit here, and you know, we're kind of creeping up to that 3% rate, we still have plenty of room under this, this ordinance. Great question.
Thank you. Anybody else? Don, do you have more of the presentation?
No, that was, that was it. Caitlin may want to say a few other words, though.
Yeah, I kind of gave a nice spiel already, but I'll just mention a couple, a couple more things about the, the transaction. There was a comment earlier about the, the debt service and kind of backloading interest. No, so that isn't intentional because the way that the city's current utility debt is structured is there's some existing debt that's amortizing between now and 2027. So if we layer in debt on top of that, it's just going to, you know, cause sort of a higher rate increase in the interim period by spreading it out and kind of having a little bit more debt in the backend, we're kind of smoothing out those rate increases. So that's one concept that we've implemented in this bond structure. And then I'll also mention, because of that favorable rate environment that we talked about already, right now, a savings projected for refinancing the 2015 bond is actually just about a $600,000 mark, which is about 10% of refunded par. And we usually use a benchmark and a bogey, if you will, about 3%. So very, very strong savings. It's a great, great opportunity to kind of combine both, both uses and, and really knock out, you know, both the refinancing and the capital improvements at the same time. That's all I had, Don.
Mr.?
Question. Hey, Don, what is our bond rating? Do you know what that is right now?
Double A minus.
Double A minus?
Yeah.
And where does that fall within other cities? I mean, we wouldn't be getting that unless we were good stewards of our funds.
Absolutely. I think for a city of this size, you're right in there in that double A, in that double A category. It's a very strong rating.
And the total rec, can somebody repeat the total amount that we're retiring of debt to by redoing this?
I think it's about, is it six point, just around $6 million and change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, thank you.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay. Any member, did we, did we do public comment already on this?
We have not, but I do not see anybody indicating, oops, Mike, Michael Thomas, please unmute yourself and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Don. Michael Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive, SC. Thanks for addressing my question on, I guess, deferring the first five years payments to interest only. I remain concerned, though, is that that pushes potential future rate increases even higher. The other thing in noting on the water study, on the water rate increase, and again, I have the benefit of attending the April 6 meeting, is that the city is also not, doesn't appear to be including any of cost of living or CIP adjustments for water rates until at least five years further out. So that's further future loading, future rate increases. Very concerned about, you know, me as someone who might be one who might lend money, you know, what's the city's future ability to pay? How much are you setting up future rate increases for, you know, city water ratepayers? And I would also like to remind that the city, I believe, has the highest sewer rates, certainly of the area, if not the entire state. You know, combined, you know, the, the ability of, you know, ratepayers to absorb these, you know, is, is of grave concern. How much more this can this really be sustained? I had also two other questions. As we all know, there is a pending lawsuit in opposition of the city's water system plan that may drive a development moratorium. What would be the impact of a halt to development on rates and the ability to, you know, pay off the bonds and, and other, and other matters? The second thing is, is I've noticed, and it's a clarification question maybe for Mr. Regos or Mr. DeBerg, that the existing sewer improvements, there was a study done that was potentially uncovered additional extensive repairs. And I can't remember if it was a clarifier or a storage tank. Is that part of phase one or phase two? This concludes my questions. Thank you very much. And comment, thanks.
Any other members of the public wish to speak?
I do not see anybody else. And I would like to clarify that the water rate study did include cost inflationary increases for general operating costs. And I believe Sergey is, is here as well and can speak to the assumption behind that.
That is correct, Don. I can answer any questions that you may have regarding the inflation assumptions. But in general, our average inflation up on and was about 3% per year as well as construction cost inflation. So we did take it into account. And we did take a projection view beyond the five-year period where we did look at not only a 10-year and a 20-year look. And again, it is assumptions driven because things do change, as we all know. But we do foresee no increases above 5.5%, hopefully dropping to inflationary period down the, down the road. But right now, based on the assumptions and the outline of the study we talked about, we're not seeing additional pressure beyond what we talked about.
Okay. Well, it looks like it's Councilmember Gothel again. Would you like to make the motion place?
Absolutely. Motion to approve AB 21-50, an ordinance approving issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $30,400,000 as a first and final reading.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Gothel, second by Mr. Ladenbach. Mr. Gothel, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I think it's something that should pass. The city has been good stewards of their bonds. The reason they've got the rating they have is because of the things we do and the staff we have. And if we recall, our staff has gotten finance awards for the last, how many years? Several years, yeah. So I think the staff has done a great job in putting this together. I think as a council, we've been a fiscal conservative, the council and done the right things. And I think this is the right thing to move forward. A, it reduces some of the debt that we had and actually helps us pay off future debt and will continue to maintain our good rating within the credit bureaus by doing this. Thank you.
Mr. Ladenbach?
I just wanted to say that Don and, and our bond team, you guys have done an excellent job. Sergey, terrific job building the numbers. I thought your presentation was exceptionally clear and, and made it easy for the public to understand that we took a look at if we did nothing with the rate structure and then built in all the capital costs and implied inflationary construction costs and, and cost of living increases. And then you were able to build that into showing what justified the rate that we eventually ended up with. And that's the kind of clear, forthright presentation that I think we all really appreciate and that the public can sink their teeth into to see exactly what we're dealing with here. And thank you for that. And to our bond team, sell, sell, sell. Get it done quick, guys. Let's get it. Let's get it while the rates are good. That's about it. Thank you.
We're on it. Thank you.
Would any other member of council wish to speak?
Yeah, Chris?
I was just, I'm ignoring you.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Rosen.
Thank you. Um, I applaud our efforts here, especially the refinancing, refunding portion of this. I think that's fantastic. It's going to save our ratepayers tens of thousands of dollars. I also understand the need for large portion of this bond is because of regulatory obligations and needing to upgrade our plant. And I fully support that. The portion that I don't support, and why I'm going to vote against it tonight, is the additional portion of the plant that will be going towards additional growth. And I'm concerned that by doing this tonight, we are obligating future councils and future residents to a certain level of growth without too many options, because we're going to need to pay these bonds back. The only option would be, obviously, if we don't want to continue to grow, would be an additional increase in rates to our ratepayers. I know I'm a broken record on growth, so I'll keep it short, but that is the portion of it I do have some concerns with and objections to. That's why I'll be voting out tonight.
Any other members of council wish to speak? Okay, I guess, I guess I will speak out. It says I'm still a council member. I, I think that, that there's, you know, raising, raising rates and, and putting, putting the city into debt is, it's, it's difficult. I mean, certainly, we're all voting to increase our own rates as we do this. And as a, as a business owner in town, you really, you really get hit by this because you already have higher rates as, as a business owner. So it's, it's never, it's never pleasant, but I think, you know, the sewer treatment plant has been in neglect for, for years. And I think knowing what we know now, we probably would have done some of this stuff a long time ago, but, but we didn't, but we didn't know what we know now. And thank you for the public works team that's on this for, for giving us the guidance that we need to, to move this forward. I think one of the big things that I see as a positive, especially with the sewer treatment plant, is the ability to still land commercial growth, which increases our tax base, which down the road allows us to do things like not raise your property taxes as much. And also, as, as the businesses come to town, you know, hopefully we can, we could spread out the, the cost of future water and sewer rates to more, to more people. So I think that I'll be looking at something coming forward that maybe, again, kind of holds a certain portion of this, this new capacity when the time is right for commercial development. Because I think it is ultimately what we need. And I'll, Mr. Miller, I'll reach out to you and Mr. Regos. And maybe, you know, when, when the time comes, we could kind of start to draft something up and, and present it to the council. But it, but it is hard, it is hard to, to do this stuff. But it ultimately, it's our responsibility to be good stewards with our public works and provide, you know, not only emergency services and, and public health and safety, but it's also the infrastructure and clean water and reliable sewer to the citizens of North Bend. And that's, that's our responsibility to do that for you. It's, it's what we're here to do. There's a lot of neat things we get to do, but the bottom line is the basic needs and these, I would consider these the basic needs to live in the city is, is water and sewer and public safety. And this is what we're here to, to provide for our citizens. And I would encourage everybody to, to vote yes for this. Okay. And now seeing that nobody else is raising their hand, I would like to make a motion to approve AB 21-050, an ordinance approving issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds in the principal amount not to exceed, that's a big number, $30,400,000 as a first and final reading. Again. I think we're, I think we're all, are, we're voting. So all in favor?
Oh, we're. Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, please let the record show. We have a 6-1 with Councilmember Rosen. And, and thank you, everybody, for that, waiting on that because it is, it is a tough, it is a tough thing. And there's not a right or wrong way to vote at any point in time. We have to vote with your heart. So I appreciate that. Okay, Mayor? Okay, mayor, council and administrative concerns and initiatives. Any of our executive team have any comments, concerns or initiatives?
Mayor Protem, I just want to say you conducted a lot of business in a short period of time tonight. And this is really a historic thing you're doing to to really respect our infrastructure. I've been doing this for almost 50 years and it's never pretty to to deal with, but we've had the sewer plant for 50 years and there's been a lot of deferred maintenance and we're getting it taken care of. And we are very, very cognizant of the environmental standards for both water and sewer. And I think you're doing the right thing for the community and I applaud you for doing that. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else of the executive team? Okay, so council, I'm just going to do this in order of my screen. Mr. Goff.
Keep coming at me first. Just everybody, we're coming towards some positive things on the COVID side, but still important for us to follow the mandates. The the governor did push off the decision for two more weeks, thinking that we've hit a peak and I'm hoping he's right and that we don't end up going back. But hopefully, everybody follows the rules, the CDC and regulations going forward and be safe out there again, as we get towards, you know, May and June, we've got a lot of celebrations coming forward. So a lot of activity out in the streets and the like daylight later. So if it is you're driving around, please be aware that we've got kids out there playing in the middle of the street and drive accordingly. That's it. Have a great night.
Thank you. Mr. Wadenbach?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Great job tonight. I guess certain people can stay on the continent and you're welcome to keep holding meetings of this nature on a timely basis, as long as you'd like to. I just wanted to say a happy Cinco de Mayo, which also happens to be a birthday for a family member of mine. So we'll be celebrating tomorrow, but in that celebration, I wish everybody to be careful and enjoy the enjoy the celebration, but don't enjoy it too much. Have a good night.
Mr. Rosen.
Well, one thing for certain, Mr. Garcia, at $30 million a night, we can't afford you as Protem for long. So let's uh, let's get Rod back quick. I think we came very close today to having a rollback in phases for COVID. And I'm greatly relieved that we did not have to do that. One of the ways we can support our local businesses, restaurants and bars and so forth is to prevent that rollback. And if we can continue to proceed with vaccinations and being safe, we can avoid a rollback. I don't want to see it. I know our businesses can hardly afford to see it again. So consider that as another incentive. I know everyone has their own reasons, one way or the other, just something to think about. We're almost there, guys. We're we're going to get through it. That's all you.
Mrs. Miller?
Hang on. Hi, everybody. Yeah, once again, just stay safe, follow the protocols. And also, I want to speak into a little bit of hiking. We're entering into some great summer weather, we're hoping. Remember your 10 essentials out there, whether you're new to hiking or an avid long time hiker. I've been able to hit the trails a little bit in my spare time and enough to watch people be very respectful, which I love to see. So keep keep enjoying our beautiful area, love in our environment. Stay safe.
Dave Miller, effecto.
Okay, Councilmember Elwin.
I wish I could mimic that kind of drawed out speaking that you did, Mary. It was really dramatic. It was pretty awesome. Now, I would like to. I I'd like to echo and double down on Mr. Rosen's comments. I agree with him. In fact, I thankfully just got my second vaccine yesterday and it's floored me. I wasn't anticipating the impact. Happy that I can make it here tonight, but but I would do it again because I think the greater good, it's worth it. And if we do that, and I I respect people's opinions, but we got to think about the greater good here. And so I encourage everybody, if you have the opportunity, please follow through on that and mask up and be safe and be smart. Thank you.
Ms. Colan?
To go on with the COVID update, 60% of King County residents have at least begun the vaccine process. So good job, King County. That's really good numbers. I saw the president speak today and he said if you had not had a vaccine yet, you can text 438829 and put in your zip code and a vaccine site near your zip code will pop up. I actually tried it out and it worked. So for North Bend, it was QFC, Safeway and one other place. So get your vaccines if you want one.
Okay, well, I would normally would just keep this short and sweet, but I've got this while you can't see it, this whole page of stuff I have to read all of a sudden. I don't know how they get me to talk so much, Kenyon. I mean, I'm always just quiet and man a few words. And Susie's got me pages and pages of stuff.
Chris, I've been telling you for 20 years, a motion to adjourn is always in order, always.
So moved.
Always.
I didn't get a second.
You got a second. Okay, so now do we have to vote? We got a motion in a second?
I'll withdraw the second if it makes you happy that you get to read for next half hour. Go ahead.
There is a couple of things I do want to say. First and foremost, congratulations to Public Works employee Randy Grenett. Randy recently celebrated his 30th anniversary with the city, which to me is amazing. I I keep seeing all of our Public Works guys out there just busting their you know what's to make our town I'll look as nice as we can. I'm going to see him, you know, weeding in the roundabouts in the morning and out mowing lawns and doing all kinds of stuff in the afternoon. And and again, it just reminds me of how great our staff is. The seven of us get to get up here and set policies and direction and and sometimes it makes our citizens mad. They're the ones that take the brunt of it. But I would just like to say thank you to Randy for 30 years is is quite remarkable. But I'd also like to thank all of our staff on a daily basis. They make this a great place to live. So thank you. King County Conservation District will host a free webinar on managing wild fire risk to your home on Thursday, May 6, 6:00 PM. Check out the city website, city. Susie, I'm going to paraphrase some of these babies. The Snoqualmie River Bridge near the Salish will be closed for repaving May 10 through the 14th. Plan accordingly. King County pet licenses are required. Get your pets license if you need to. In May, the senior center will host two free weekly support groups. You're not alone during COVID. Beach meets each Tuesday at 2:00 PM via Zoom. And we'll discuss concerns related to grief, loss, social isolation, anxiety and other stressors and caregiving support coming together, tips and strategies to help you take care of you. Check out the city website for more information. Happy May the 4th be with you. Just learned that that on the news today. I never knew it was a thing. And speaking of spending $30 million a meeting, I think that that's that's getting a little bit out of hand. And so I think that that being said, it's time for me to walk off into the sunset. So I want to announce for those that are interested that I will not be seeking reelection in this this coming November election. So if you're interested and want to know what it's about, reach out to me. I could fill you in on all the fun details. You get to work with some great people and and believe it or not, it can be a lot of fun. So that being said, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
You hire out as campaign manager? Motion to adjourn.
No.
Damn. Okay, campaign. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Kenyon, did I did I make?